Thanks Lauren.
Please sign in.
Yeah, I just turned your ear. Oh, okay, you're reaching your ear.
I know, they know how to make me turn my ears.
I can do that, thank you very much.
Oh, I'm on you here.
Oh, I call my finger down. Yes, he will.
Hi, well.
No, it's not here.
The lease agreement, I found some more airs. They don't have it printed, it was on my computer, so now I'm gonna have to pull it up on my phone. And try to do it because they're kind of important.
What do you think so far?
What?
Oh.
She's watching.
OJG. We're looking forward to this. Oh no, you're kidding me, I'm resigning. I see you making it, Lauren.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, after all you did, I worked nine seconds.
All right, good.
Yeah, there's more, but she just talked about this, so we can pass it, but I might just have to take this out. Okay, do you ask? By John Martin.
Yeah, that's fine, we can do that. That one section.
We sell books, we sell a book, reading like this.
What's that?
Yeah.
Did you get any messes?
Is it done?
No, we messed up on the, we didn't get any resolution number on, so we're good on that.
Say that on the record, so I can make those changes.
Yes, because you don't go beyond the base that that's off from what they were.
No, don't even talk to me.
So, we're at that's not, or be good?
We can pass it just based upon.
On the first.
We're going to add that.
Which one? Five, five, seven, eleven. We're going off, or?
Oh, it's good to go. It's good to pass, we'll just, I'll just add some language before you sign.
Okay.
So it doesn't need to be.
Okay, never mind, we're gonna do. We're doing five. Change six. Okay, welcome. Apologize for the second, we had a few last minute changes here, it's three minutes after fi- after three on the twenty ninth day of July two thousand twenty five, this is a meeting of the Board of U N A County Commissioners. We're in the Commission Chambers in Vernal, Utah. We have Brenda McDonald for the prayer and Angie Semper for the pledge. Amen.
I declare allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all very much. All right, our first order of business will be approval of the minutes of July twenty second at twenty five and July twenty third at twenty five.
I would make a motion that we approve those minutes as presented.
Any comments, concerns, statements? Okay, call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. Number two, approval of the warrants, Mr. Wilkins.
Commissioners, I have warrants from July twenty fifth of two thousand twenty five in the amount of one million, two hundred twenty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. There's a couple that are out of the ordinary, not normally on the check runs, one was for three hundred thousand dollars to, it is a contribution to the care center. And we also paid for our annual audit for fifty-seven thousand, one hundred. And then the rest of them were just the monthly bills and our contribution to our self-fund insurance was in there also.
I'm sorry, what date was that, Mike?
Pardon me?
What, as of what date?
July twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth, okay, thank you.
Okay, just the one, Mike.
That's it.
Just the one. Okay, do we have any tax matters?
Oh, we need to approve.
Well, I guess we ought to have approval on that, call for motion? I'll make a motion that we approve the warrants as presented by Mike Wilkins. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No tax matters, we'll continue on. Well, I feel like even though I am the Commission Chair up here, that I'm pretty much in school today because we have three crowns that I'm looking at. We have Queens. We have a teen volunteer, Miss U N A County, Olivia Hawkins, please come forward. The teen volunteer, Abby Olson, please come forward, and volunteer Princess Brea Hardkins, please come forward. I don't know if you've seen a more pretty sight, but that is some pretty ladies. Would you mind stepping over to the microphone and giving us a quick brief on what your platform is and what are we going? And make sure the red button's on down there, I think it is.
Awesome, I'm Olivia Hawks, I'm the new Miss U N A County volunteer, and my serve initiative is Buckle Your Brain, which is a helmet safety campaign promoting the use of helmets here in the U N A County. I've seen firsthand how the use of helmets can really change your life, so I would love to keep working, and especially with the new All Wills Center coming in at the rec center, I would love to be working with them and get helmets requirement, so, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
I'm Abby Olson, and I'm your new Miss U N A County Teen Volunteer, and my serve initiative is Cultivating Community Connections: The Impact of FFA, which basically showing the behind the scenes of farming to little kids.
Wonderful, thank you.
I'm Brea Harkness, I'm the new Miss U N A County Princess Volunteer. My serve initiative is called Cuddle Your Fries Away, and it is to help comfort those that have been in uncomfortable situations such as witnessing or experiencing domestic violence or child abuse. I'm basically giving them teddy bears, blankets, any other comfort items to help comfort them when they're talking to people about what they've gone through. Because I know that it can be hard to talk to people.
I don't think I have a platform that I don't appreciate. All three of you, those are great choices, thank you very much. We're very honored to have you come and visit with us, thank you. We look forward to seeing you guys at the fair. Does anybody need pictures with the Queens, they'll be right outside, five dollars apiece. Make sure you pay them. Thank you very much, we sure appreciate you guys coming and lighting us.
Should we get a picture of them? Should we get a picture out front right here?
If you all don't leave when we get done, we'll get a picture with you, that way we can say, cool, for us. Thank you so much. All right, next item is grazing lease, U N A County property with the Morrells.
Commissioners, I will handle that if that's okay, I don't see Mr. and Mrs. Morrell here. We were approached, the county was approached about some property that the county owns between the high school and twenty-five hundred west. The county purchased some property with the intent of turning that into some housing units. Right now, it's vacant property, the grass is growing, we're concerned about fire liability. The, the Morrells are neighbors, and they asked if they could lease this property. They stated that they would fence it, maintain the fencing if they could lease it for some horses to graze. They'd maintain the fencing and also water it, the county does have some water allocation that went with this property. The Attorney's Office did write up a contract. There are some, some things that we need to add to that contract, including some language about an easement that goes along with that property, but we did have sent that to you, and we would ask that you do sign that. The payment for this is that the Morrells will pay the wa- for the use of the water, and have agreed to maintain or create fencing where needed, and to keep the fire have enough animals that can be grazed that they will keep the liability for fire at a minimum.
Okay, great. Go for a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the grazing lease agreement as presented by Lauren Anderson.
And based upon the, knowing that I will make those changes with, in the description, the property description with that easement language that's required.
Do we need to give any other details of the lease?
The only other thing I want to make is that, that they pay us, and then we pay the water taxes to make sure that they get paid, and they pay it on time, so that we're not relying on them to pay it, and then we happen chance we, they default or something, that, so when you're writing it, make it that we could tell them what it is, they pay us, and then.
And it's my understanding, it's an annual payment, correct?
Yes, that's an annual payment usually due by November.
And I'll make sure that's clear.
November for, let's say they do us, us by November first, we'll have it paid by the thirtieth. That would be my only comment on that, as you're writing that.
It's usually due in October, is that what you?
November thirtieth, I believe, is when it's due.
I think so.
So we can make it November first of each year?
Right.
Okay, okay, I can certainly add that.
Would you like to amend your motion?
I would amend the motion to include that verbiage.
Both Mike and Lauren. Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns? No, this got worked on pretty hard, and I know Lauren's gone over and over it, and we've, we've worked it out, and that property needs to be taken care of. So we don't have some tragedies there, so. Okay, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Number eight. Library DMCA and submission policies for the Museum of U N A County, U N A County Heritage Museum is the old name. Darren Kelly.
Thank you, good afternoon. Before you is two policies that we have for the Museum of U N A County, I'm hoping that you got copies of those last week when I sent them over to you. The DMCA was, Digital Millennial Copyright Act was passed in nineteen ninety-eight, and back then the library, the museum, the Regional History Center really didn't have to worry about it, we wasn't putting user content submissions online back then. But as technology has grown and as the years have gone by, we've now started putting content online, the library, for example, has Beyond the Margins, which publishes patron stories. The Regional History Center has patron pictures that they're publishing online, and so does the museum. And the museum's also working on a couple of books that are also gonna be published, not just physically, but also online as well. And therefore, with consulting with the Copyright Office, we decided that we needed a DMCA policy which would protect us and also protect the patrons in submitting works that will be published online. Like I say, back in nineteen ninety-eight when this law was passed, it's not something that we really thought about back then. And it really didn't come up until recently, when a question came up in the library about posting content online, whether it would violate any copyright laws, and that's when we did the research and found out that we needed a DMCA policy, we needed a DMCA copyright agent, which is namely me, and to also make sure that we're protected not just under Fair Use or Section five-one-twelve of the DMCA, but it gives us extra protections in the sense that if copyright notices are given and takedown notices are issued, that we cannot be sued as an entity, there is a set procedure that they have to go through. This comes under the takedown notice policy from the DMCA, and so therefore moving forward, these policies, we believe, do need to be in place to protect ourselves, not just the Regional History Center, the library, or the Regional History Museum, but the county as a whole.
And that will be on the library website?
It'll be posted on the library website, on the museum's website, also on the Regional Histories website. There are forms that, that the patrons will sign stating that they have read the DMCA copyright and takedown notice policy. That will come under the patron content submission policy, where they will claim that they, it is their own work that they are submitting. They will testify to that, that they are the legal creator and owner of the content that they are submitting, and that there is also a takedown noticing policy that if, for example, somebody else comes along and says, no, this is my work, there is a procedure that we will follow to take that down and to follow up.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion? I'll make a motion that we approve these policies as presented by Darren Kelly. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. All right, we're skipping number seven. We'll, that'll be continued next week. Number eight, U N A County I T Information Technology Steering Committee Operating Procedures, Crystal Clark and Ryan Mattson from our I T Department.
Commissioners, this policy changed just a little bit from what was presented in work session. Ninety percent of it is formatting changes, just cleaning it up, making the, making the indents correctly and getting it a policy number, so it's Policy eight forty. The only things that changed since the last revision you got just an hour or two ago there was a return here at County Sheriff, so that I T Director or I T Manager's on its own line, and then just getting the page numbers all lined up and everything else like that, so. Other than that, the other big change from work session was is that now a quorum consists of four members for the committee. And other than that, pretty much everything is the same as it was in work session, adding the County Sheriff onto that as a member.
Okay. Did you say a quorum was four members, so it'd be a seven-person board?
Correct, it is now a seven-person board, so six elected plus I T Director slash I T Manager on the board, or on the committee, excuse me, it's not a board, it's a committee.
Any questions or comments? Call for a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the U N A County I T Steering Committee Operating Procedures as pre- as presented by Ryan Mattson.
All right, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Ms. Semper, we have ratification of Utah Office for Victims of Crime, Voca Grant Agreement for C J C. Thank you.
You had the other two because you've already signed them.
Thank you. Give me mine back.
I'm not sure the exact verbiage, but I'm here for a formal ratification of the A G's contract amendment for the state and for my U O B C Voca federal contract award amount. Commissioner Larson has already looked at these and approved them, I will say comparatively around the state, our federal funds did not drop that much, we took about a twelve percent budget cut and went from one twenty-five to approximately one fifteen, we were able to do some fancy reallocation and kind of satiated and remedied where we would potentially have any gaps. For my federal funding, what we were mostly using that for is victim advocacy as well as mental health. So, I did, because of the cases and the amount of people that we're seeing, we had an increase in our A G contract, hence the amendment. So, between that and some rollover, I really feel like we're in a, we're in a decent spot.
Good.
Commissioner, if I may jump in, I, our office did review these, the amendment and this contract, the first contract is I'm not sure if it's annual or every two years, but it's a similar contract that we always receive, it's just the amount that, that's different, and then the, as she stated, the amendment to the A G's office.
The Voca award package, yeah. Not much changed except for the amounts, which is very sad. Because of the decrease, though, in federal funding, I spoke with our mental health contractor, and we were getting a little bit of kickback from some of the protocols and policies at the federal level for mental health, so in our mental health contract, we only changed the terms and dates, or the dates of when that would need to be renewed, as well as we did remove some of the practices in therapy that they were really not liking, for lack of a better term. So, they're not providing complex trauma treatment because what they were, what they are requesting is a smidge more than what the state thinks they should, and it's just not as productive as individual sessions, so we did increase the individual sessions, remove the complex trauma, and then group therapy, they're no longer going to do that with us, it's very difficult because of the sensitive nature of who we're seeing and things like that, we don't want to cross not populate, but get them all together, I think that would be, so we did remove that specific category as well to kind of recoup.
Ms. Semper, if I may jump in, just to explain something, this concerns the number eleven, the renewal of the C J C mental health contract. We had, I, I had reviewed this previously, but we were making some changes to it. Those changes were not made, so this is just a similar contract to what we had before, with the only difference being the individual counseling versus, as she explained, versus the complex counseling, and then, of course, the dates. It would start July first, as that other one just will end the end of June.
Yes, I felt like that would be easier because that's when our contract for our federal funding is, and so just kind of renewing it all at once at the same time would be we would be better served time-wise, so.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions?
Now, is this ratification of, is this number nine, ratification of the?
Number nine and ten would be the ratification, and then she was just explaining number eleven.
Okay, okay, so this is number eleven, the renewal of the C J C mental, the Children's Justice Center. Let me ask you one question verbiage, so the public doesn't get the wrong impression, when you said we're getting kickback on it, you didn't mean monetarily, you were meaning that they were concerned with some of the problems we had.
Practices, absolutely, yes, yes.
I just want to clear that, the public knows we aren't getting many money back.
No.
That's a slang term used for getting money back.
No, we're not getting any money back, I wish, but no, I meant, they were questioning the that specific therapy practice, so.
All right, this is number eleven, so I'll call for a motion. I'll make a motion that we renew the C J C mental health contract as presented. Any further questions or comments?
I did, was it seven-one of twenty-five to six-thirty of twenty-seven, or is it only a one-year?
I did, two years.
So it was a twenty-seven?
Yes, what we're funded for.
Okay, that was the only thing I hadn't been able to find real quickly, but, okay.
Okay. Go for a motion?
Oh, he did.
Oh, I'm sorry, we'll go for a vote then. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number eleven is passed. If you can go back to number nine, tell us what that contract's about real quick, Angie.
Is that the state or the Voca, I don't have my, oh, there it is.
I'm sorry, it's, that's the victim, the Voca Grant Agreement for C J C.
Um, like I said, we did not get quite as much federally, a law of programs were either not funded or drastically reduced in their award amount, we didn't take quite as big of a hit as others did, so we're very grateful for that, so total is two hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-two, yes. Two hundred and seventy-six and seventy-eight cents.
So the first page.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioners, this is similar, a couple weeks ago, we had the Voca Grant our office received for the victims advocate in our office, so this is similar, this is just with the, the C J C.
Right, and that was a, a quick sign, which is why we're ratifying it instead of approving it. Okay. And the ratification, the Attorney General's Contract Amendment is basically the same thing, is that correct?
Correct.
It's the second page in our packet.
Okay, I don't have a packet.
I believe, is that correct?
Yes, just the state of Utah contract.
I'm sorry. Yes, just the, um, State of Utah Contract Amendment. Amendment number four. Um, we did receive a substantial amount more comparatively than we have in past years, but that is because of our incredibly high caseload. So.
Well, do you know what it was last year compared to this year?
Funding wise, or?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so, um, two seventy-one, two hundred and seventy-one thousand and, oh.
That's okay, just roughly, it's good.
Yes, roughly two hundred and seventy-one. Um, it's two seventy-eight right now, but I did get some rollover funding. So instead of having to access the one-time funding that I'm hoping is earmarked for the completion of the basement at the CJC, we were able to just utilize rollover. And the AG's office did that to, um, kind of bridge that gap for the loss that many centers took for the Voca cuts.
Okay. All right, I'll call for a motion for ratification on number nine for the Utah Office for Victims of Crime Act Voca Grant Agreement.
I would so move.
Okay, any more questions or comments on that? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Here, and I'll call for a mo- I, I on that also. Call for ratification of the Attorney General's Contract Amendment, number ten.
I'll make the motion that we ratify the Attorney General's Contract Amendment as presented.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks Angie.
Thanks guys, have a great day.
Thank you. Jenny? Ratification of Department of Cultural and Community Engagement Grant Contract.
Jenny Byrd, purchasing and grants. All right, I have two, okay, so I have, I'm presenting the Department of Cultural and Community Engagement Grant. This is a technology grant that the Uena County Library received in the amount of five thousand dollars. Uh, the funds will be used to purchase equipment that aligns with the library's three-year technology plan and will be used in their new creative space. Some of the services that will be incorporated with this equipment include an embroidery and sewing machine, cricket machine, and other creative devices. The contract was sent to the library on July seventh and they had a one-week deadline for signature. So because of this, we were unable to get on a commission meeting agenda before we had to execute that, so. Um, we did get the agreement to Lauren and his office has reviewed it, he's approved it, and now I'm asking the commission to ratify this.
Any questions or comments on this? Call for a?
I would make a motion that we approve, well, we ratify the Department of Cultural and Community Engagement Grant Contract as presented by Jenny Byrd.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will now go into recess from Municipal Building Authority. Commissioner Norton is the chair of that, so I turn it over to her.
Thank you. And I will turn it over to Jenny to talk about the, I can talk about it if you'd like, but
Either one.
This is just so that we can, um, ratify the CIB Grant Agreement for the cemetery building. The Uena County Municipal Building Authority received a grant award from the Community Impact Board for seven hundred thousand dollars to assist in funding a multi-purpose facility at the Vernal Memorial Park. The total project is estimated to cost one point four million. That amount includes engineering, utilities, construction, and a contingency. The remaining seven hundred thousand dollars, which is matching funds, comes from five hundred thousand from the revitalization funds, fifty thousand from Uena County Cash Match, and a hundred and fifty thousand from Vernal City as a cash, cash match. The funding was approved on June fifth and was sent to me for electronic signature and was signed on July eighth. Because this was signed prior to this meeting, I'm requesting that we ratify this grant award agreement. The contract terms are from June fifth of twenty twenty-five to June third. That's twenty thirty. Thirty. And the amount is seven hundred thousand dollars with the match of seven hundred. I don't know if you want me to go into any more description. If there are any questions, um, we're happy to answer those.
Okay, I'd make a motion that we accept this, ratify this grant as presented.
Okay, is, is there any other questions? No? Okay, I would, uh, ask for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye.
Thank you.
So, thank you. That is unanimous. And now I will ask for a motion to adjourn the Municipal Building Authority. Okay, there is a motion, so we are adjourned. And now I will turn it back over to Chair Larson.
I'm sorry, I almost forgot the name. I have board appointments, I have a board appointment to the Animal Control Board, it'll be Deb Hammacher, she's been serving on it, um, for the last four, it'll be another four years, starting in January of this year until twenty-seven, right, twenty-five? Oh, twenty-nine. Okay.
It'd be the end of twenty-eight then?
The end of twenty-eight.
Okay.
Do you have a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the appointment of Deb Hammacher to the Animal Control Special Service District for a term of January first of twenty twenty-five to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-eight.
Okay. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do we have any public comment today? All right, I do have a statement to make. As we're all aware, the over-the-air TV stations have been off the air for quite a while. The Special Service District USSD One is responsible for the upkeep on the TV stations. Due to a refusal of the USSD One to pay the technician to keep the system in operation, he is not willing to perform the work. I'm aware that the Recreation Department of Uena County took responsibility to keep the TV on the air since approximately nineteen seventy-four. When the Recreation Department was made into a Special Service District, the responsibility for the TV was also transferred to the Special Service District. Since that time, the Recreation has paid, Recreation District has paid to keep the TV updated and working for our citizens. The Special Service District has members appointed by the commission. The commission determines the funding of mineralized money to each district. Other than that, the county has no control over the Special Service Districts. The commission does have one member sitting on the board of seven people. However, the commission on, commissioner on the board only has one vote, just like the other members of the board. We do have new equipment to be placed on the mountaintop to enhance the TV. However, since the technician is not being paid to install the equipment nor to maintain it, we are losing TV signal daily. We encourage the public to call the Utah, Uenta Special Service District One to inquire what is going on. I strongly recommend that they contract the board members personally to voice their concerns. There is nothing that we as commissioners can do at this time. We are trying to get it back on the air and, and keep it going because we understand that is something that the community is, has been working on. So we need very, very strong support. If you would, contact them. Another thing that's come to light is there's some concern on weeds in the canal, in the, um, canals that have piping in them. Those weeds have been sprayed by the weed control people. They will be sprayed again in very near future according to our weed control specialist. We do have an opening for a person to perform control of those canals. As you know, we have many, many miles now because we have taken them over as flood canals. We have yet to have anybody apply, so if you know what, somebody knows how to operate some heavy equipment, please, please, please get on our website and apply. Anything else? Okay.
I'm, I move we adjourn.
And? We are adjourned? You missed out today on your adjournment, buddy.